Good evening, welcome to Leary Council Meeting for Monday, November 17th, 2025. At this time, we'll take a moment of reflective silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Lippian, would you please let us into pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lippian. Everyone, to please turn your cell phones off or in the silent mode out of respect for the meeting, would be greatly appreciated. Mr. Clerk, glad roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Sira.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Oswald.
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Tolett.
Here.
Mr. Lippian.
Here.
Mrs. Sorka.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
All present.
Public hearings. We have one. You are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held on Monday, November 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM to consider the following. An ordinance demanding section 1131.02 codified ordinances of the city of Leary, Ohio, known as the zoning ordinance to rezone certain real property located on West Ridge Road, Leary from R- MHL Residential Multi-Household Low Density District and R- MHH Residential Multi-Household High Density District to R- MHH Residential Multi-Household High Density District. Are there any proponents? Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Barron with Builders and Developers, address is 27201 Royalton Road, Columbia Station. We're here requesting approval of a zoning change to an existing parcel that's zoned currently RMHL to RMHH, which is the current zoning of the balance of the parcel. The site total is 9.6 acres, and with the zoning change, that allows to build 23 buildings with four units each. All buildings will be single-story, and they'll all, each unit will have a private entrance. We'll have two separate driveways, one off of Brunswick and one off of West Ridge, and the parking will be concrete pavement. We will have our own detention pond that'll be able to handle all of our stormwater. And the sanitary sewer is located off of Brunswick Drive, and water is available at both entranceways. At this time, I'd be glad to address any questions, and I'll throw out the site plan.
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Barron, for your investment. I just want to let you know, we do have a few neighbors in the audience tonight that probably would like to speak to you on the side about just buffering and things of that nature. They're over here by the center aisle. Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other proponents? Are there any questions for Mr. Barron? Ms. Sorka?
Thank you, through the chair, through the president. I just have a question because I'm getting a lot of concerns about street lighting on private streets and private drives. Are you putting in streetlights along here? I'm assuming these are going to be private streets?
Yeah, they'll be private, and yes, we'll have streetlights.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Barron? Very good, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Okay. Are there any opponents? I declare this public hearing has been held. Thank you. Sponsored by Community Development, an ordinance demanding section 1131.02 codified ordinances of the civil area of Ohio, known as the zoning ordinance to rezone certain real property located on West Ridge Road, Leary from R- MHL Residential Multi-Household Low Density District and R- MHH Residential Multi-Household High Density to R- MH, R- MHH Residential Multi-Household High Density District. Mr. Schneider?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its third reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mitchell, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2025-187, that's all the public hearings? Going to get approval in the minutes? Gonna move? Moved by Mr. Sarah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider, is there any further discussion?
Question.
Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Remarks and reports from city officials, Mayor Brubaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing this evening but available for questions.
Any questions for the mayor? Very good. Safety Service Director, Mr. Pyranowski?
Thank you, through you. Just one thing to update you on, we are finalizing the street scanning report. All that's left to do is to add the recent paving work that was done, so it's reflected. We should have that out to you soon, but it looks pretty good. Councilwoman Mitchell joined us for a presentation, but we'll, the scores actually came back pretty good overall, but we'll have that finalized report out to you here soon. Thanks.
Any questions for the safety? Mr. Oswald?
Through you, Mr. President. For my benefit and a few people that have been asking me, what's the, when you buy one of those flags, the vet flags that they hang up, is that one price and they're up there forever? Do they come down, or do they pay every, for, for everybody's benefit, what's the process on that? How they're?
Through the, through you, Mr. President, the, the veterans banners that you're referring to that are hung down downtown, we're looking at, as far as the lifespan, they've actually held up better than we anticipated, so we're having a conversation now. Originally, it was for three years it would hang, and then would come down and go to the family member, so we're exploring that now. We're looking at additional space for next year. We had a change at the, in leadership at the Leary, Leary Veterans Council who had been making a donation to offset some of the costs to the individuals who are doing them, and so we're confirming with them whether that will continue into the future. So I don't have an accurate price for you right now because we have a little bit of transition right now. We will do them again next year, they should be coming down soon, and we will publicize them when we're ready, and we have some of those questions answered for next year, and once I have them, I can share that with council as well. But there's a couple of things that are in, in the works as far as transition, and this is, this is the end of the third year, so we have a couple of questions we need to answer, but we'll get that information out.
Thank you. Ms. Sorka?
Thank you, through the president. The next piece of legis, the first resolution, I just have a question on the resolution that had the list of the unpaid utility bills. There's one account that's still waiting on a lead credit, so I wondered if we're passing that as is, or we should, that gets noted, that's maybe a procedural issue question? On the attachment, the attached list, the one, there's a notation that is waiting on a lead credit, so.
Sure, thank you. Through you, Mr. President, at the end of the day, we'll wait to, to set the amount, anything left over after the lead credit is applied, I'll work that out with Ms. Connor, so that the right amount is certified.
Thank you.
Mr. Sarah?
Through you, Mr. President, excuse me, leaf pickup. That goes into the first part of December or until it snows, is that correct?
Last year, we did it through mid-December, so we haven't picked an end date yet, it'll kind of depend on need, I suppose, but we'll announce that in advance before we cut it off.
So the trucks are still out there, weather dependent?
Oh, they're absolutely out there picking up pretty much every day right now, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider?
Through you, Mr. Charity Director Pyranowski, on that topic, is the compost facility through the end of November, or does that roll into December? I can't remember, just for my own sake.
Through you, I, I don't know, I'll get you an end date on that, I'm not sure when, when the cutoff is, but I'll get that and circulate that.
Thank you, Director.
Any other questions for the director? Thank you. Finance Director Pluski?
Thank you, Mr. President, so the October income tax reports were distributed today, everybody should have got their email. So if you look, if, when you look at that report, you're going to see that when you look at the first 10 months of 2025 and compare them to the first 10 months of 2024, income tax revenues are up 6.58%, so that's, that's considerable growth. That's the good news. The bad news, when you look at the cash balance in the general fund, and you compare it to where it was at the beginning of the year, cash balance in the general fund is down $2,089,540 or so. It's apparent that significant growth in income tax revenue that we are having is not enough to cover the expenditures that we're incurring, so we're going to have to keep a very, very close eye on this situation as we move forward, as I've noted in the past. Thank you.
Any questions for the Finance Director? Thank you. Law Director Derry?
Good evening, Mr. President, through you, just briefly. My office will be participating in a Ninth District Court of Appeals argument this Thursday with respect to the former Days Inn ownership's challenge to the assignment of the receivership. We, of course, on behalf of the city and as the proponents of that receivership are, again, defending the fact that we believe that the receiver was appropriately appointed. I cannot give you all a specific date as to when we should expect a decision, however, typically, it does take at least 60 to 90 days for the Ninth District after an oral argument to render a decision, so we should see that hopefully, ideally, in the next year. If, I hope all of you had the opportunity to see the mayor's update from earlier today. Meanwhile, the receiver has been finalizing a purchase agreement on that property, and until and unless there is a court order letting the receiver know that he is not acting lawfully and appropriately, he has indicated he will be moving forward, and I will keep you updated on any, with any updates that I, that I will have for you. So I, again, these things do not move quickly, but they are moving forward, and we will persist on until we get to where we need to be with this, so I have no intention of letting up. So also, there is a federal lawsuit that the ownership for Days Inn has filed, and that is within their rights. The next status in that case is in March, so again, that also will not be moving quickly. So as long as the ownership would prefer to pay attorneys, which is within his right, rather than take care of his business with his property, we will continue to pursue that.
Any questions for the Law Director? Ms. Davis?
Through you, Chair. With, with this stewardship or trusteeship or whoever's in charge, when they sell this property, is it, is it going to be in writing that they have to demolish the Days Inn?
Through you, Mr. President. The, any transfer will specifically require that the nuisance, as is set forth in Ohio law and in the court order, be abated, and there is a definition as to abated. So my understanding, and I don't want to say too much in public forum, my understanding is that it would be most fiscally prudent to demolish, but let's say that the new ownership wished to spend whatever it would take to get that property back into full repair and going, and that is the route they wish to take, I mean, that, that would be their prerogative, but from all of the studies and consultants' reports that I have heard about thus far, it does not sound like that would be financially reasonable to do that. So, so, short answer, no, it does not flat out say you must demolish, but it does say that you must remedy all the issues.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, and then Ms. Sorka.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to the Law Director, I'm going to change the subject from the Days Inn. Do we have an update on DBR? I know that we agreed and moved forward, and what are they doing? What's going on? If you can, please.
Through you, Mr. President, I can let you know that, to the best of my knowledge, the city has not heard anything from DBR. We have not received any signed documentation from DBR Commercial Realty. All documentation has been signed as, as far as the city's concerned, and it is my understanding that the Leary City Schools has not received any signed documentation either, and that's as recently as this past Friday, is what I've heard from the attorney for the Leary City Schools. I have heard through the grapevine that there have been discussions with the Port Authority, still ongoing, but as far as having documentation that's fully executed in hand, I, we do not have that.
Ms. Sorka?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President, back to Days Inn for just a minute. So the sale goes through, the new owners have whatever rights, I guess I'm curious as to what's the zoning for that property? Just briefly, Darrell, I don't expect you to know, you know, what else would be allowable at that location besides the hotel, without it coming back to the city to go through that process? Just curious.
Through you, Mr. President, and Darrell, please, that is part of the overlay, is that fallen in the overlay?
Mr. President, through you. To my knowledge, that is not in the overlay for the parcel districts. From memory, I do believe it's currently zoned Business General District, and Business General is our most user-friendly district we have in the zoning code. The current rewrite, I'll have to defer to Mr. Schonig on what it's going to be, but I do believe we kept it akin, so that way it's more usable and feasible to build.
Thank you.
Mr. Schonig, if you want to just kind of elaborate on that, just to make sure there's clarity? Thank you.
Thank you, yes, that is proposed to be commercial zoning in that area, allows most flexibility, similar to the Business General. The only other district that would allow more flexibility would be the Corridor District, which permits more residential uses, but the commercial still does permit, from my recollection, townhome uses in that area. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President, I apologize, but jumping back to DBR Commercial Realty, there is a status conference set in the court case, which has been stayed for December 16th, and that was, that was set at the time of the stay, so that will be here, it'll be December 4th, we know it. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Law Director? Thank you. Leary Police Department, Chief Welsh. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Leary Fire Department, Chief Parnesty. Any questions for Chief Parnesty? Mr. Schneider, City Engineer. Any questions for Mr. Schneider? Mr. Farkas, Chief Building Official, any questions for Mr. Farkas? Mr. Oswald?
Through you, Mr. President. The mayor sent out a little tidbit on, on a video that you're going to be doing, could you explain a little bit? I think this is a real good idea, but I was just wondering if you could share that?
Safety Service Director Pyranowski, if you want to weigh in first?
Thank you, through you, I'll take that. This is something we've started doing recently, it's going to communicate a lot of information from a lot of different departments. We put out a, recently, we put out a wastewater video kind of showing the process that takes place at the plant. Some of them will be larger scale like that, talking about larger operations, showing people some of that, pulling the curtain back a little bit. Some of them are going to be more specific about something that's currently going on. For instance, we did a video with the street department about leaf pickup, and how we'd like to see where we'd like to see leaves put, and, and that kind of stuff. So this is something we're trying to do using social media and other means to communicate with the public better on all things. And so it's, the building department is one of many departments we're talking to right now to try and help use, share useful information, address frequently asked questions, that kind of stuff. So we met with water pumping today, we're meeting with water distribution next week, and so we're, we're putting those types of things together to, to communicate to the community specific things that are going on timely, but also to talk about city operations as a whole, to show them how much goes on every day.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farkas.
Mr. Farkas, did you have anything else, Mr. Farkas, as far as, are there any other questions for Mr. Farkas? Okay, very good. Mr. Schonig, City Planner. Any other questions? Mr. Oswald?
Through you, Mr. President. I think we had this discussion, I didn't know if you furthered it yet, we were talking about some, how you were going to address these Airbnbs, and as far as how you're working it, you were looking at a few different other cities. Can you explain if you've come up with anything, what the process may be?
Yes, through you, Mr. President, the process that we're looking at right now in the proposed draft of the zoning code is to permit them conditionally in the residential districts, that way there is a filter through Planning Commission, certain criteria are listed in the use definition. I can provide you, of course, with that information if you would like, after this meeting, tomorrow morning, of course, just to further, you know, provide you with that information.
Thank you.
Ms. Sorka?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President, as a follow-up to Mr. Oswald's question, how will that information be filtered down to the safety forces when those properties are rented out? I mean, there was just that tragedy in Bath where it was a rental home that where people were shot, so how will we communicate that to the police and fire departments, that that's an Airbnb or a rental, and who's responsible?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, the, the intent behind this, within the proposed zoning draft, is for there to be almost a database for these uses. Currently, working with our law department, there is a rental registration that is underutilized at this time with the city. The intent is for them to be registered with the city, and of course, that information, I believe, would be shared with our safety service, or safety forces within the city.
Any other questions for Mr. Schonig? Very good, thank you. Mr. Smallwood, Sanitation Department. Any questions for Mr. Smallwood? We will be addressing in regards to our sanitation department and the strategic planning, so at the end of this meeting. I think that takes care of everybody. Presidents' referrals and remontresses. Item number one, finance. Item number two, finance. Item number three, finance. Item number four, finance. Item number five, finance. Item number six, finance. Item seven, strategic planning and finance. Item number eight, utilities. Item nine, received and placed and filed in the clerk's office. Petitions and remontresses from the lobby? There are none. Petitions and remontresses from council members? There are none. Reports sustaining of special committees? There are none. Resolutions first reading. Sponsored by finance. A resolution approving a list submitted by the Safety Service Director for the collection of delinquent inactive utility accounts and directing the clerk of council to certify said accounts to Lorain County Auditor. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Resolution 2025-51. Sponsored by finance. A resolution approving the collection and demolition related costs for 330 West River Road, Leary, Ohio, 44035, and directing the clerk of council to certify said costs to Lorain County Auditor. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Resolution 2025-52. Sponsored by finance. A resolution approving the collection of, of demolition related costs for 342 11th Street, Leary, Ohio, 44035, and directing the clerk of council to certify said costs to Lorain County Auditor. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Resolution 2025-53. Sponsored by finance. A resolution finding that the city has unfit for municipal use certain city property. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Resolution 2025-54, that's all resolutions first reading? Resolutions second reading? There are none. Resolutions third reading? There are none. Ordinances first reading? Sponsored by finance, and ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director of the city of Leary to dispose of city property that is unfit for municipal use. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2025-188. Sponsored by finance, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to lease real property located at 799 North Abbey Road, owned by the city of Leary, and declared emergency. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
And declared an emergency, I apologize.
Does the second concur?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2025-189. And ordinance, amending ordinance number 2025-182, impertinent part authorizing the adoption of the proposed 2025 compensation study completed by Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc., and declared an emergency. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2025-190. Sponsored by finance, and ordinance authorizing the finance director to transfer funds to specified account. Mr. Tolett?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2025-191. Ordinance 2025-191. Sponsored by finance. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2025-37, known as the 2025 Permanent Appropriations Ordinance to change funds in various accounts. Mr. Tolet.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Snyder. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2025-192.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of order. I'll be stepping out for the next two readings due to a perceived conflict.
Sponsored by finance. An ordinance to reflect updated wages for certain non-bargaining employees of the Allee Municipal Court. Ms. Davis.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second. Second by Ms. Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2025-86 to address certain Allee Municipal Court employees salaries, non-elective, non-bargaining, and declared an emergency. Ms. Davis.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules and declare an emergency.
Second. Second by Ms. Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2025-86. Oh, I'm sorry. An ordinance amending ordinance number 25-97 to address the wage adjustment for certain non-bargaining classified and unclassified Chapter 165 employees on account of the Gallagher compensation study and declared an emergency. Mr. Tolet.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Mr. Snyder. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. An ordinance amending Allee Codified Ordinances, Chapter 165, employees generally, Section 165.33 pay grades status, and declared an emergency. Mr. Tolet.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Sponsored by Community Development Finance. An ordinance approving the application for the downtown historic redevelopment grant program created by ordinance 2021-31 for improvements at 353 through 361 Broad Street, Allee, Ohio. Mr. Snyder.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules. Second.
Second by Mr. Tolet. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Sponsored by Utilities and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Utilitech Doxum for utility and stormwater bill processing and mailing services for the City of Allee and declared an emergency. Ms. Mitchell.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second. Second by Ms. Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Ordinance 2025-198. That's all ordinances first reading?
Or it's the second reading?
There are none.
Or it's the third reading?
There are none.
Committee calls.
Finance requests the presence of the Law Director, Safety Service Director, Building Inspector and Engineer on Monday, 11/24, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Utilities requests the mayor, Law Director, Finance Director, Safety Service Director and Engineer on Wednesday, 11/19, beginning at 6:00 p.m. And strategic planning requests the mayor, Safety Service Director, Finance Director and Law Director on Monday, 12/1, immediately filing full counsel. Ms. Laney, it's an unfinished business?
I got some.
Mr. Armstrong?
Through you, Mr. President. Just to address Mr. Snyder's question, there's only seven days left for the compost facility for the end of the schedule according to their flyer.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Any other questions? Ms. Laney, it's an unfinished business? There are none. Ms. Mitchell? So just so that everyone's clear here, we're going to end this meeting, then we'll go, take a five-minute recess, we'll go into strategic planning.
Mr. President, seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second by Mr. Snyder. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Okay. On what grounds?
Thank you all. So we're going to start the strategic planning meeting for Monday, November 17, 2025. This is in regards to the matter of the REA Business Advisory Sanitation Department rate study. This has been kind of going on for different various aspects of this, of the sanitation department analysis that's going to be presented here tonight. And then we had other privatized companies come in and give us a, their rates of what it would cost them to do privatizing based on the referral that was set up by the Safety Service Director, Pyonowski. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Safety Service Director, Pyonowski.
Thank you. Through you. This, what we're here to discuss tonight is the rate study done by REA Business Advisors as part of the overall sanitation department review that we did this year, looking at operations, costs, and efficiencies. REA did a similar report that was delivered to council in 2018. And so when looking at that report and when starting this process, a number of the issues that they reviewed were similar to things that we're discussing today. Services, by and large, had remained the same. They were talking about the potential of building a central, a new central maintenance garage at that time, which we're still talking about and are moving forward with now. So I thought it made sense to ask them if they could simply update the report to reflect today's numbers and address a couple of other topics, specifically looking at some of the services that the sanitation department provides and what costs associated with those particular parts of services might look like. So Adam Letera is here from REA. He is the individual I worked with to have this rate study completed. The rate study, and he can elaborate on this, but part of it was, what are our costs now? What would our rates need to be in the future to address future costs? So he projected costs out to five to eight years, I think is probably as far out as he went. So that is reflected in the report, but trying to understand what the costs will be in the future as we continue to try and provide the sanitation service, understanding what the rates to our residents would need to be in order to cover those costs was part of the question that he was asked to explore. So I would invite Adam Letera up to the podium to discuss his report and go from there. Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record. Welcome. I don't know if it's, your microphone's not on.
Adam Letera with REA Business Advisors. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to present tonight. Thanks to Director Pyonowski for all the work with his team on the project and just appreciate the opportunity to share with the community what we found. From an agenda perspective, we'll just kind of do a quick background, background overview. As you mentioned, we have kind of a unique perspective coming into this analysis in that we, or at least our team, did this back in the 2018, 2019 time range. So we have that vantage point to help us. We'll talk about the financial methodology that we used, all the data that went into the analysis, and some of the key assumptions that we used for forward-looking modeling. Then we'll get into some of the actual scenarios that we looked at and modeled out and what the projected results of those changes would look like. And then lastly, we'll summarize some of the recommendations and key conclusions to consider going forward. So from a background and purpose of the study, as Director Pyonowski mentioned, really the bottom line, costs have continued to rise, no surprise, I think, to anybody in this room to hear that. Specific to the department, those costs have continued to outpace revenues coming in. This was something that was called out back in 2018, 2019. Changes that were made recently have kept the department from being in an underwater position. So just as recent as this year, 2025, a $5 monthly rate increase was deployed. Without that, there would be, there would be a drastically different picture, at least in this year. And secondarily, we know now that the public work facility is a go. It's going to happen. It's $22 million. It's not that the sanitation department is footing the bill for that, but it certainly will change their operational model going forward, and they will have contributions to that ongoing. Again, as we already mentioned, we looked at current rates, alternative scenarios, and then different strategies to ensure the long-term viability of the department. And then the reality is, as well, being that Allee is one of the few counties in, or one of the few cities in Lorraine County that's still providing public sanitation, the city exists in a context where we're being compared to privatized rates and, but we're also offering a unique service to the county. So we just need to recognize those realities as well. As far as a little bit more in-depth kind of confirmation of what's going on in the department, that includes trash collection, recycling, brush and leaf pickup, and tree maintenance services. Some specialized service offerings that are also offered in the community would be large item pickup and emergency tree maintenance, which is extremely valuable based on feedback in the community and what we hear on city council. It's important to note, too, and this was noted back in 2018 and 19 as well, but this department does make financial contributions to the general fund and to the water funds as well. These are designed to offset administrative costs that contribute to the department, but they do seem reasonable at this point in time, but it's something to consider ongoing just to make sure that those funds, those dollars that are contributed to those funds are in line with the activity that's supporting the sanitation fund. And also important to note that since the 2018 study, it's, there have been clear efforts made to optimize efficiency within the department. Some recommendations from back in that original study have been enacted, one of those being the work practice of staying until the end of the shift regardless of when routes were done, and that has had an increase on productivity in the team. So I guess bottom line here is, there's good things happening, not enough to offset the costs, so let's get our arms around what the future looks like and what else can be done. From a methodology for the analysis, we looked at 2023 and 2024 financial statements. And so not only could we see changes that were happening from '23 to '24, but then again, we had that data from back in 2018 and 19 and what we thought could happen from then till now. So those are all useful comparison points. With that, we were able to do detailed cash flow projections, grouping the functional expenses into key groups, and then drawing insights from that. Along with that, we also projected the net cash position of the fund. And the idea there is we were trying to not put the fund in a position where it's driving cash negative, but that view also, you know, not only just trying to have revenue in line with expense every year, but it also gives you an idea of, if we're already sitting in a positive net cash position, where does that give you some flexibility to maybe allow rates to level out for a period of time? So based on all these historical trends, budgets, known inputs, we forecasted out through The purpose of this slide is really just kind of ground everybody in the magnitude of percentage of some of the buckets of expense within the fund. So you can see between wages and benefits and waste removal, those capture an overwhelming piece of the pie here. Wages and benefits at 47%, and then when you, when you account for the 6% that goes to the indirect funds, that goes indirectly to the other funds, you know, you're well over 52% of wage-related expense within the department. Waste removal is another significant chunk at 26%. And so important as you get yourself grounded in those things, as those expenses move, a lot of the projections will move along with that. So the assumptions around those are very important. Another look at this, just to kind of look at it in total dollars from a 2025 projected annual spend perspective. So the wage and benefits buckets, about $3.2 million. Waste removal, almost $1.8 million. And then to jump over to the right, another perspective to look at this from how your monthly rate as a resident would break down proportionally. So 1572 of that monthly rate would pay for wages and benefits. 869 would pay for waste removal. And we kind of work our way down the chart there. But all of this is just designed to get ourselves grounded on that monthly rate and what it contributes to. So as we think about any forward-looking projection, it's really all in the assumptions that go into that. And like any forecast, it's going to be wrong to a certain degree, but we try to use what we know, what we saw in the past, and known inputs to make that as educated of an estimate as possible. Looking at those key buckets and the percentages that we did use in the model, with the exception of wages and waste removal, which had actual known contract increases for the next couple of years or as part of the collective bargaining agreement, past that, we were able to kind of just level out those percentages that we modeled based on, again, what we saw in history and especially in '23 and '24. A couple of outliers around repair and maintenance and supplies, again, just looking at history there, and then with the age of the truck fleet repairs and maintenance, we were definitely leaning into a little bit of a conservative estimate there, just knowing as the leaning into a little bit of a conservative estimate there, just knowing as the trucks age, they will definitely need more maintenance. Where you see a rate of 2.6%, that's designed to be based on general inflation. So inflation's pushing towards 3% right now. With the latest projections, as you get to 2029, it would come back down below 2.5%. So that's kind of why we landed at that 2.6. But that's the scope of forward-looking assumptions that we baked into the models. So now getting into the specific rate scenarios and some of the cost evaluations that we did, wanted to highlight a few of those that were most important in the conclusions. So beginning, we just took a no rate increase scenario. So we know where we are from a baseline perspective on revenue. Bake in those assumptions, model that out going forward. What's that going to do to the fund? From there, we looked at a next modest step up of 3% annual rate increase. Same thing, modeled out through 2031. Then we looked at a 5% annual rate increase. And then ultimately, what we'll start talking about as we get into conclusions is more of a balanced strategy. You know, there's not a silver bullet here, but there are some things that we think will ultimately make sense. So if we look at no planned rate increases, and I apologize, some of those figures on the bottom of that chart might be a little hard to see, but keeping the residential rate at 3338 a month, the homestead rate at 2487 a month, and keeping that stagnant through 2031, you can see that revenue is projected about 6.98 million, and that would stay stagnant. Again, we're assuming no rate increase and no significant change in customers. From an expense perspective, between 2025 and all the way through 2031, that's where things start to get a little bit staggering in that we could be over 9.3 million in 2031 at these assumptions. So what that would do is in 2026, that's where net revenue over expense would start to flip to the negative and driving our cash position, net cash position in the fund, down to 5.1 million negative by the end of 2031. So that's where it becomes apparent that doing nothing is probably not a great plan. So the next step up was modeling a 3% annual increase. So some positives here, that would keep things, net revenues over expense positive and net cash flow positive almost through 2027. However, when we do start driving the net cash balance down '28 through 2031, the rate of acceleration would still put the fund in a negative cash position, almost, I believe, almost $6,000 or $600,000 at that point. So stepping up a little bit further to a 5% annual increase, the positives on this approach are we never see net revenues over expense or net cash flow drive negative. So those are good things. On the flip side, we end up with almost 2.7 million net positive cash in the fund by 2031. So while that's not a bad story, there could be a situation where those rates, to that degree, were maybe not necessary. And while we did look at brush pickup and tree removal, again, one new look in this analysis was trying to get arms around the full cost of the recycling program. So when we look at the cost of landfill at about 106,000 annually, truck expenses, so that, that's all the fuel, all the repair and maintenance, about 295,000. Labor, that assumes three drivers for those three trucks. And then other overhead that gets allocated from all the other expenses, we assumed roughly 30% across those three trucks, which is about 30% of the fleet. So when you bring all that together, and noted that the overhead's a significant assumption there, but you start to look at the cost of the recycling program, and it's $1.6 million to the fund every year, which is about a 24% of total expense to the fund. When you look at tonnage for recycling, recycling is less than 5% of total tonnage. So it's just the reality of, it's just the nature of recycling service. It's extremely more expensive compared to the tonnage that flows through the program. One slice on this was considering if there was a reduction or a removal of the recycling program, what kind of savings could be realized? So this is probably where there's maybe a little bit, probably larger assumptions than in any other part of the analysis. But in this situation, we would say, you know, not all of that tonnage goes away, probably 20% gets diverted to the landfill. So you wouldn't eliminate all the landfill costs. From a truck perspective, we said, you know, maybe one of those trucks gets repurposed, so you wouldn't remove all that expense. From a labor perspective, you know, maybe there's another role for that driver, for a driver to stay on board, so you wouldn't eliminate all of that. And then we assumed, you know, only 30% of that overhead could be reduced. So potentially, the ability to reduce by $750,000 by not having a recycling program, but honestly, you know, we all know the value of the program from a contribution to sustainability and things like that. So it wasn't necessarily that we were looking at actually, you know, ripping that program out, but it's just important to understand the scope of the costs that are associated with that. As we noted at the beginning, and this is just some additional perspective of privatized rates around the community, you can see, you know, anywhere from the $20 to $27 range is out there from private offerings. Also, it was, you know, it is very obvious and continues to be very obvious that there are things that this program provides to the community that a private service really wouldn't without charging more. So I think it's pretty well-known that anyone can call and get something picked up, and there's never going to be, you know, a race to a rate, and they're going to get a higher level of service than what you would get with some of these private rates. But, you know, it is a comparison that will always be out there. So moving into some recommendations and conclusions. Again, looking at some of those projections, not being proactive did not seem like a prudent approach. So what we did ultimately recommend is a 5% annual increase over the next three years. The idea here is, we saw the projections, that that definitely puts the fund in a solid position, also gives room for flexibility and agility and decision-making at that point, that is not going to leave the fund behind the eight ball and trying to play catch-up. So starting with a 3%, if any one of those assumptions around cost increases wildly outpaces, then we're in a position where we might be needing to catch up again. And then it's, oh, we're at three, now we need to go to five potentially. So starting at five, we have reasonable projections, puts the fund three years out in a position where maybe they can scale back, but not having to play catch-up, which is a position that everyone would like to stay out of. Continuing to focus on cost control measures. So again, we saw the size and magnitude of wages and waste disposal in the fund. Everything should be, continued to be monitored and looked at for either slowing cost increases or opportunities to bring them down. But those are two buckets of focus. You know, if those can be contained, then that will help not outpace the rate increases. Maintenance optimization is always going to be an ongoing focus. So with nine trucks in the fleet and they continue to age, and I didn't note this earlier, but also baked into the model, we've got about 450,000 in annual capital spend for new equipment. So maintaining those at the most optimal level is always going to be an important measure to control those costs. And part of the recommendation here is that the fund monitor that capital you're spending, but then also monitor that maintenance spend alongside of that. Because if we're doing well at maintenance, we should be more efficient with the capital side as well. And lastly, again, noting the fund reimbursements. So as those are structured today, there's nothing about them that seems unfair, but it's just something to keep in front of everybody and understand the methods behind those. So it's 5% of the revenue collected automatically goes to the general fund, and then it's 2%, I believe, of the water funds, admin wages allocated to billing. So I think it's just important to keep an eye on those and make sure that those indirect allocations are still in line with the support that the sanitation fund gets. So if we kind of put this into three buckets going forward, again, we mentioned the rate increase, but it's proactive financial planning. So it's continuing to monitor this, it's continuing to stay ahead of it, and not finding ourselves in a position where we've got to slap a $5 increase on all at once. Continuing to look at optimizing the services and having a level of transparency on where those costs are going. And then ongoing community engagement. I know that Director Pyanowski talked about some of those initiatives with digital and social media, but it's ultimately making sure that that rate that is being charged is still providing the value that is perceived by the residents. And kind of with those three pillars, we think we can stay ahead of it and keep things in a responsible position. So with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Is there any questions regarding the study of Mr. Telet?
Through you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to maintain our sanitation department as is, and I would refer the rates to Finance Committee for final review.
Then we could go to question for discussion.
Well, you already have a motion on the floor for that. So someone would have to second, but there's people who have questions to ask prior to your motion. The motion's on the floor, someone has to second. Motion made by Mr. Telet, seconded by Ms. Mitchell. Discussion, Mr. Oswald?
Through you, Mr. President. So lately in the city of Aliria, we've had a lot of new developments, a lot of homes. So we're going to have increased service. Does that help us or does that hurt us, you know, when you're talking about picking up the deliveries and stuff? Is it like better to have more customer, you know, does that have anything to do with your, you know, in the study?
We didn't model in any population growth, any significant population growth, but obviously more customers, more revenue coming in. We would have to really, we really have to bake that into, how does it fit into the rates? Because it's not, it's probably not a one-for-one or the same in every part of the city, I would imagine. So I know there was just a rate study done, but I think we'd really have to model out, you know, specifically where that new development is. The customer base is easy. It's, you know, however many people or however many accounts times the new rates. But then where does that model into routes and what it would actually add from an expense perspective? That would probably be a little bit more in-depth look.
Okay. Thanks.
Through you, Mr. President. This is sort of on the same topic as Mr. Oswald. All of these projections are based on the routes staying the way they are with no adjustments. Because I know we had discussed making some route adjustments, and I don't know if the director can talk about that as well.
Yeah, this analysis didn't change any route structure.
Go ahead and answer that, Mr. Pyanowski.
Thank you. Through you. Yeah, we did do a route study as well with a separate company, and they did provide two options. One is maintaining our routes that's currently structured. The other is, would require about 10% of our customers to switch their pickup day, and that's the biggest consideration. And if we do that, we'd be able to eliminate two and a half routes on Tuesdays and Wednesdays with our current construction, our current number of customers. So it'd be two, it'd be a trash route, a bulk, excuse me, trash route, a recycling route, and half of a bulk route on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So that is something in consideration. However, that would save us, you know, the driver would still come to work, we'd just assign him something else, maybe brush that day or something. It's one less truck on the street or two less trucks on the street. So we're saving on fuel and wear and tear on the truck. So I didn't try to, I didn't want to complicate his, you know, his exploration here further because they're also, we're kind of doing both at the same time as well, but it's only going to put us in a better position. And so, and I think that, you know, going back to Councilman Oswald's question, you know, I think some of it is the adding more customers within our current customer confines of the city, it's going to help offset some of those overhead costs, and it's going to help, you know, it helps spread it out a little bit further. But we're not growing terribly much further than we already are unless we start annexing some large pieces of property. So right now where we're at, those customers are going to be within our service area. It's if we expand our service area and keep going out, that I think the cost to travel further is what gets a little more complicated. So I think that that would actually be a positive thing for us as we continue to add customers as long as they're within our current service area, kind of drew a circle around where we work at.
Thank you.
Did you have any more follow-up, Mr. Sir? Ms. Sowaka?
Thank you, through you. My questions are related to the same kind of thing. Your review is based on the customer base count of 2024. So now we're in 2025, and I'm guessing we're adding several homes a week, a month. I'm curious, and obviously you don't have it at your fingertips right now, but what the households were in the 2018 and 19 study? Because there would be some ratio of increase that was recommended then based on counts and based on growth, but probably in 2018 and 19, the annexing of all the property on Indian Hollow, the ones out on West 113, the new homes that were the schools were, because those are all our pickups. So I am curious about the count, and I think there is a trade-off between adding more customers and adding the cost for more customers and changing how we do that, how we either new more trucks or more personnel. So I would be curious as to what the numbers were previously to see if there's some correlation.
Got it. Yeah, I know we were, I know the number now is in the range of, it was close to 18,000 total accounts, but I can get to the prior one as well.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. President. The only other question I have that's really not in the study is, you know, we have now hundreds of homes we are collecting sanitation and sewer charges, but not water charges from. And I just wonder if that influences the revenue stream at all? That probably wasn't something that you even looked at. Because now we have lots of homes that we are collecting the garbage and we provide sewer to, but we don't provide water to. And so therefore, we don't really have a control when the bills aren't paid. They have to be sent over for collection, which we just did tonight. So I think that all of those factors, as council moves forward, whatever decision is made, you might want to think about those as well. Do those factor into our revenue stream? I'm not sure, but I do think that it should be noted. Thank you.
And the thought there is just understanding collectability on those accounts, is that, would that just help you understand?
I'm sorry, through, you could repeat that, your micro, into the microphone?
I was trying to understand the, what that would help inform. Would it be the collectability on the sewer and the sanitation accounts? Because you don't have water as kind of a lever to drive that.
Correct. Through the president. Yeah, correct. We can't turn that off. We can stop picking up. But I'm not sure that that doesn't help.
Sure.
It's just that that is sort of a new nuance to our business model. It's just that that is sort of a new nuance to our business model.
Okay.
That is growing exponentially that we didn't have in the past. It wouldn't have existed as much in 19 and 18, 19.
Okay, got it.
So it's just something that I think is more of an asterisk than a major piece of this.
Got it.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I know a conversation we never want to have is getting rid of recycling, because there are some people that do recycle and they do it correctly and they do it religiously. But then there are some people who use the recycling bin as the trash bin, and from what I understand is if so much of the load in recycling is contaminated, then that costs us money. So maybe, I'm just throwing this out there, maybe the thing is that we get rid of recycling or we better educate people about how to recycle, or we look at having a central recycling location. But it's costing us money, so it maybe doesn't make sense to do. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Mr. Pionowski, if you want to weigh on?
Yes, thank you. Through you. We've had a lot of conversation about recycling. Something has to be done about it. There's a couple of options, some which you've already identified. All of them have pros and cons. But we absolutely have to do better at the recycling process, keep the costs down there. I think that my impression is that the majority of the residents would like that program to continue. I don't know that to be sure, I haven't surveyed them, but that's my impression. And if we discontinued, I think they would probably expect a cost reduction to their rates, which would probably be a fair expectation. We've talked about dumpsters at our parks that people could take their recycling tube and put in. We have concerns about people dumping all their stuff there then, so that's, how do you monitor that? We've talked about an opt-in option. You want recycling, you pay a little bit more. You don't, you don't. And so keeping track of that, we'd probably have to hire a full-time administrator to look at that possibility, you know, to keep track of all that, the sign-ups, the disconnections. So that's some, Cleveland did that. So we've looked at that. We've looked at an education program. How do we simplify it? Make it as simple as we possibly can. Give me these five things and don't put them in a bag. Right? If you do that, we don't have contamination. But getting through to the people that you've mentioned that might use that trash can as a second trash can is challenging. We have a lot of people in this community that might not be committed to the rules or might not be familiar with them, so it's a constant education of people that might be coming into the community. And then enforcement. We have to essentially go around and check cans. And if your can ain't right, we got to turn it around so the driver knows not to pick it up. So it's a, it's a large undertaking to fix it. And it's going to, whatever we do with recycling in the next, you know, it's going to be a big focus, recycling is going to be a big focus for the next year. But we have had conversations about options and deciding the best option. I've met with the county, I've met with solid waste. We've explored a lot of things. So if we move forward with the sanitation department consistent with the motion that Councilman Telet has made, we will put together a plan, and we've had a lot of conversations about that, and options.
Mr. Oswald?
Through you, Mr. President. So I'll throw in one more suggestion, because we're going to have that nice central maintenance garage, and we're going to have a lot of space. And I think the idea, when we were first talking about this, having mechanics that can work on all the different vehicles, there's going to be a lot of ways that we can manage to save money by having this building. So it's going to be good, but even if you have a drop-off center within our confines where they bring their bag of recycling and then it's checked in and then thrown in, I don't know if that's way more work than we want to do, but then we can see what's going in rather than having a dumpster at a park where they just throw whatever they want in. So my only two cents, thanks.
Thank you, through you, Mr. President. It's an interesting idea. I think that instead of doing that, I would recommend people take their recyclables to the solid waste facility on South Abbey, which we've also talked about with the county and otherwise. And they do take some of the recyclables. You know, if we put it at CMG, that's not convenient to some people in different sides of town. I think that we've seen, I'll use the compost facility as an example, every once in a while on social media, why don't they take my grass clippings? Well, you can take them right there. Why do I have to take them anywhere? Right? So I think that we've got some of that feedback that most people don't want to have to work too hard to have that service. So it's an interesting idea and one that we could, we could look at, but, you know, especially if we were to have drop-off locations, maybe including that as one. But there is no perfect answer, unfortunately. It's going to, it's just going to take a lot of effort to try and clean that up.
Mr. Snyder, I guess?
Through you, Mr. President. To Director Poleski or Safety Service Director Pionowski, I know we have some budget items in here for capital improvements. May do you foresee in the next two, three years, any truck purchases that we need to go through, anything of, that exceeds that estimated threshold that they have based on what we have in the inventory? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President. When talking with Adam about this report, it would be my suggestion that we have a, in the budget every year, a line item in the amount of $400,000 to $450,000 for capital purchase. We currently have six, I believe it's six of our sidearm trucks that are original purchase from when we went to this system, and so they're at about 12 years old, and their lifespan from the manufacturer is suggested eight to nine. So, you know, congrats to our maintenance people that are keeping them on the road. But, yeah, we need to make an investment in trucks, and we need to make an investment in this department to make sure that they're successful, and that's part of what the rate conversation we need to be at the Finance Committee meeting should we move forward with this. But my plan would be each year to buy a truck, right? So $400,000, $450,000 gets us a side loader, a rear loader is about $300,000, and so each year to buy a truck and utilize that capital line item, which will be in the budget each year to do so.
Thank you, one more.
Mr. Snyder?
Just to piggyback a little bit, this might be more directed towards Director Poleski. On the marijuana money, I know that's like, we probably still don't know, do we have any projection as to what we're going to receive? Just so we could potentially explore some capital improvements through that fund? Because I think we may get one potentially large payment and then down the line, smaller payments, but please, if you have any information on that, let us know. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President. No, I do not have any idea yet what our initial deposit will be, but keep in mind that that money will be received and accounted for in the general fund, not any enterprise fund. So, I mean, obviously the general fund can spend money on any other type of operation. It could be used for sanitation, but it will be accounted for in the general fund when we do get it.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong, before I go, Law Director Dearie, then I'll have you go. Law Director Dearie?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President. To piggyback a bit on what Finance Director Poleski said, I noticed on this, the pie chart, or I guess I would say the wheel chart, is one of these categories, is it specifically encompass, I guess, capital needs, new purchases? I know there's a big chunk that is maintenance and repair, but what about for, I guess, new expenditures? For instance, you know, having to replace a truck?
Sure, yeah. So that, from a, from an annual expense perspective, it's in that depreciation figure there.
Okay.
And then that, the spend itself was modeled out through the cash position, sorry. So as that cash leaves, we modeled that in.
And if I may, through you, Mr. President, because Director Poleski and I, we've had this conversation several times recently, not so recently, as Director Poleski said, I mean, there's nothing wrong or improper or dare I say illegal about using general fund money to make these capital expenditures. I know recently we used ARPA money, we've used what we familiarly call issue six money to make these capital expenditures. But ideally, as Ted has pointed out to me, ideally, when you're using, you know, we have an enterprise fund in an ideal world, and I realize we're in the real world, but ideally, this fund should be able to cover those capital expenditures. So that's just something to bear in mind.
Mr. Armstrong, then Ms. Davis.
Through you, Mr. President. Director Poleski, don't we have a track, a new truck on order already that we've already purchased?
Through you, Mr. President. I believe all the trucks are now in. We've ordered three with the American Rescue Plan Act monies, and I believe we purchased three with the half percent income tax monies. I believe they're all in. I could be incorrect, but I'll refer to Director Pionowski.
Yeah, through you, Mr. President. I do believe they've all been delivered. It's fire trucks we're waiting on.
I can tell you they're all paid for, so.
Ms. Davis?
Through you. On the special service that I noticed on the schedule, if you want to go back there, if not, I'm just going to tell you that I didn't, I noted that the senior pickup is very valuable, very valuable to the seniors in this city. And we don't ever want to see that go away. I'm getting older myself, and I know I'm going to need that service. So I know that when something is in, is not in writing, I want people to know that the seniors of Aleria appreciate that special pickup. So the truck comes down, they got to get out of their truck, go up to those homes and pick it up for the senior, which we are grateful for. And I know that that would never happen in another service. Only the city of Aleria do that.
Mr. Telet?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President. Great point. The other thing that why would we refer the rates to finance was so that we could also examine the homestead rates at the same time. I think that's a very, very important part. If we, whatever increase we would put on to maintain our services, that we need to look at that homestead rate as well. Thank you.
Mr. Pionowski?
Thank you. Just to clarify, the homestead rate is a multiply, is multiplied against the base rate. So whatever that discount is, it would automatically go. But I do think it would be helpful to go to Finance Committee and have some conversation about the rates consistent with the report that Mr., that Adam has provided us, and I would appreciate that opportunity.
Ms. Sorka?
Thank you, through you. Perhaps council will consider if we are going to get money from the marijuana, adult marijuana sales, we sort of suspend the practice of subsidizing the other salaries in the general fund. And if you did that for a short period of time, that's enough to shore up sanitation for truck purchases. If you're going to, because you indicated to Mr. Snyder that that money would go into the general fund, which is fine, but then that means that we wouldn't have to do the reimbursements from sanitation to the general fund for the salaries of safety service or law director's office or whatever they're being used for now. So that might be something that should be part of the Finance Committee's study of the rates. Because even if you suspended it for three, say you did it for two, two or three cycles, that would be enough to build up cash volume for purchasing equipment.
Mr. Poleski?
Through you, Mr. Chair. All good points, but just remember what I reported earlier today, that we've spent over $2 million more than what we brought into the general fund as is, so we have to clear that situation up first, I think.
And that's to my point. When I brought this to council about a year ago, we had this study done for privatizing the department. It's nothing against these individuals and the phenomenal job and the work that they do and the efforts that they do. It's never, it's never about that. It's looking at the bottom line of this. And based on what I was seeing here, so in 2028, if we choose to go the 5%, the city of Aleria, just for the sanitation, was $38.64 as compared to Republic's estimate was $20.51. So that's a difference of $18.13 in the residential rate, and the homestead rate for the city of Aleria is $28.79, and for the homestead rate for the Republic service would be $15.28. Now, when this comparable was made, it was mirrored to what the city of Aleria does, and they asked Republic or the other companies to mirror what we do. I think on Facebook, I think there's been a shortcoming of people having mistruths about the, not the recycling, but the, I forget, I was using my train of thought, but it's in regards to the bulk pickup. They do the bulk pickup just like anybody else does over and through there, but they never had an opportunity to express their, what they had over and through here. I respect everything here my colleagues are saying, and I agree with a lot of all that, but at 2020, 2028, you're going to have to revisit these rates. These rates aren't ever going to go down. They're going to continue to go up, and that's what makes the competition what that is. I just think that, you know, you're continuing to purchase vehicles, you're continuing to purchase maintenance, gas, salary and wages, they're all going to continue to go up. And then whether this metric shows that for this 5%, but come year after 2020, you're going to have to come back. Maybe it might be a lesser amount, but you're going to have to come back with rate increases for the residents. One question that I was asked at the last meeting was, okay, so by the year end here, you're going to have a close to a $38, $39 rate increase just for sanitation, but you're going to have a combination of the sanitary, the wastewater and the water. Did this administration come up with that amount, what it would be for those combined? That was asked at the last meeting about what those combined rates were going to be, like if you did sanitary, water and the sanitation rate. I thought Mr. Snyder asked that question, what that number would look like based on So I guess if that's something that we can get at the next meeting when it was referred over and through there, and then, I can't remember, I think this coming year, we're going to have a 16% increase on the water rates for '26, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe it's 15% for water and three, I think, for sanitary sewers.
Okay.
3%.
I think that's probably be vital for the next finance meeting so that we could have those rates together. And I think that's what we're talking about, the vehicles. I think there were good comments about, you know, where these funds, we're paying them from, if this is all going to come from this rate increase, or it seems like it might be a kind of a combination of everything until we, you know, put this in a line of where this direction is going to end up going. But it's nothing against your, the employees that are here, I just see that it's going to continue to go up. And I think we just need to, in my opinion, looking at that. I think this is how the comparison was laid out when we had Republic and those other companies looking at it. I understand there's going to be other people who are paid out of these funds, but that's how I feel. I can't support this. So with that all being said, is there any other questions or further discussion?
I'll call for the question.
So if you want to read the motion again, is everyone clear on the motion that was made by Mr.?
No.
Mr. Telet, if you still want to make the motion then or read?
I do. It is to maintain our current sanitation department and rates to be referred to the Fin, to Finance Committee for final review.
There's been a motion?
I second.
And a second by Ms. Mitchell. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nay. The ayes have it. So based on that, I guess when the, when the administration has those numbers together, when you want to bring it back to the Finance Committee for further discussion over there, I thank you for your coming up here and with this study and updating this report. If there's, obviously, there's any questions more, then I'll have to go through the finance, the Safety Service Director, will ask you those questions. If there's nothing more to come before this committee, I'm going to adjourn.
Some moves.
Second it. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.